Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Town Council meeting on February 13th, scheduled at 6:00 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could take a moment of silence for all, everyone serving here and abroad. I would check to see under masks, general lock, anyone's recording the meeting besides Don. No one? Public comments?
Anyone registered?
No.
No public comments at all. Council comments?
I have one thing I'd like to bring up. In speaking with a couple of other councilmen, I discussed an idea that I've had, that I thought would add some values to some of our council meetings with regards to some of the younger folks, understanding what's going on here in our meetings. So, I'll just open it up. I'd like to propose, we open up a discussion on adding a topic to our agenda after council comments that deals with our high school senior class. It would involve, basically, a five-minute opportunity in our second meeting of the month for the senior class president to speak on high school events, i.e., final exams, sports, class trips, proms, and other functions of interest to the general public that watch our meetings, and also inform the council. The student would also take away what they have learned at our meetings back to the senior class in their meetings. This would be a great opportunity for the council, residents, with or without students in a high school, that watch our meetings to hear about what's happening at the high school. This would also allow the students who are or will be voting soon, the opportunity to learn about how our town functions, and become more involved in local government as they grow and prosper in their young lives. That's it.
Thank you. Denise, Town Manager's Report.
I don't mean to cut off Denise, but we have a sixth public hearing, I believe.
We were probably gonna run the clock just a little bit, so hopefully all of the other public hearings will kind of flow together, so...
You can't start them early, but you can start them a little bit late.
That's right.
And John is a patient man. Where are you, John? Oh, there you are. Good evening. Senator Lesser, ooh, that was hard to say, will be attending the March 13th council meeting. The senator will speak briefly on activities at the state level and address any council questions or comments. Also, Senator Lesser's senior advisor, Michael Clark, called, asking for projects that we might be able to get funded at the state level. So, I gave him a long list that he can shop from, but a couple of examples are the ADA issues at Town Hall that would be addressed by the elevator, so I thought something that had to do with disabilities might be good. The Veterans Project, the Veterans Memorial Project, I thought would be a good one. They're not huge, but they're good projects. And the former fire station on Shaker Road, which is really not doing well.
Yeah, it needs work.
And could be used for, either for storage space, or it could be used for something. So, those are some of the projects that I submitted to their office. We received official notification that our free cash has been certified. Sarah can provide more detail under our financial matters portion of the agenda, if you have any questions on that. We've changed the policy throughout all town departments regarding cash payments, and it's a bit of a learning curve for the residents and the businesses that come in. What they have to do now is go to the town, the Collector Treasurer's Office, and pay the cash, get a receipt, and then go to the department that has the, whatever kind of permit that they need. We also have implemented credit cards, so people can use credit cards, but there's a fee attached to any credit card that we looked for, and it's not, you know, it can be a large fee, it goes by increments of the amount of the charge. So, it's, we've put it on the website, we sent a notice out with the tax bills, and it still seems to be catching people by surprise, so I thought maybe just letting you all know about that here would help. I've provided you all with a copy of the town's profile that is compiled and distributed by the Massachusetts Division of Local Services. I thought, it has interesting facts, a lot of statistical information about the town that I thought maybe you would like to just have. There's also some, I have comparisons with other communities, some of those statistics are compared with other communities. I put that together myself, for myself, but I can share it with the council if anybody would like to see that, just let me know. I've also attached a copy of a recent library news, as there's some interesting programs coming up, and I thought, maybe you can attend some. Good books, and it's, they do great stuff. All our departments, really, we have, we have great staff here. Our first public hearing tonight is for the grant application for $800,000 to fund the Town Hall Elevator Project, a mobile food pantry, a Housing Authority roof project, and housing rehab funding for up to 15 housing units that meet income thresholds. Building Commissioner Kevin Duquette has begun handling sign permits rather than the planning board. It streamlines the process for the applicants, and he really needs to sign off on them anyway, so it just takes one step out. He's also implementing a new process to try to address the zoning violations in town, mainly for signs. He'll go to visit the properties that are in violation, and he'll bring a courtesy, fill-in-the-blank letter, so that he can do it right there, saving postage, doing it immediately, instead of mailing letters back and forth and all of that. So, he's really thinking of innovative ways of trying to address some of this stuff. There's a lot of violations that he needs to just chase after. Also, beginning March 1st, if you've gone to Town Hall, there's a notice on the front door that says, "All applications and drawings and all of that for any building permits needs to be done electronically." He's reducing the amount of paper, he's getting more accurate. You know, you can read them all, where if they're handwritten, it's not as easy, so he's handling that as well. The veterans group that is working on the new memorial, if you've looked right up front, they've put up a new sign. It's great, they're so excited, it's a first step progress for them. Finally, this Thursday or Friday, will be moving day for a portion of the Treasurer Collector's Office. Don Fonte and Peter Benjamin will be moving into the former Building Department space. That'll start the shuffling of the different pieces that are gonna come together, allowing the Finance Department to all be in one space, and flipping the Clerk's Office into the current finance space. It should, it should work well, 'cause there's only two staff members in the outer office. Right now, there's three, so they should have enough room. That's, it's certainly a busy time between budget, capital, four union contracts, and I think it was a full moon today, 'cause there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of strange people coming in.
Is Mardi Gras?
Ah, maybe that's what it was. Strange requests for stuff. So, Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Denise. So, we have a pretty full agenda. Tonight includes five public hearings, so I'd like to entertain a motion to leave our printed agenda, to jump from six, which is approval at a minute, to our first public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, our first public meeting, the reason for this meeting is to discuss the town's fiscal year 2018 community development strategy. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is represented this evening by John O'Leary to present their plan. Council members this evening are Thomas O'Connor, Paul Federici, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and myself, Mike Kane. Tom, if I could have you, we'll open the public meeting and have you read the legal notice.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will conduct a public hearing on February 13th, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the East Long Meadow Council on aging 328 North Main Street, regarding a proposed FY 2018 application to the Massachusetts DHCD for up to $800,000 under the Community Development Fund program. Proposed projects include housing rehabilitation, architectural barrier removal study, housing authority improvements, and funding for a mobile food pantry program. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will be assisting the town with the administration of the program. All persons with questions or comments regarding the grant application will have an opportunity to be heard. For further information, contact John O'Leary at the PVPC. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Hi. Nice to see everyone again. I'm John O'Leary, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Tom did a great job, I'm pretty much, you can give some background and, you know, description of why I'm here. So, you know, I'm really here to open it up to the public or the council, whether there are any comments or concerns, and ultimately ask for your authorization to be able to submit the grant. Just a brief background, I don't know if you remember me, but I was here about this time last year. We've since adjusted the application slightly, but for the most part, excuse me, it's the same. Projects including carryovers were the housing rehabilitation program, the Town Hall Accessibility Planning Project, the mobile food pantry, were the ones that were carried over from last year. And then we removed the ADA-compliant ramp construction project with a roof replacement project at the inward comments. So, basically, the activities that we're applying for. Bruce has been nice enough to come up here and maybe describe a little bit more on...
Well, I'm here, obviously, supporting the Town Hall Elevator. We've been working on that.
Bruce, could you just, do me a favor and state your name for the record, please?
Bruce Finney, Department of Public Works Superintendent.
Thank you.
I just came up here to support Mr. O'Leary here for the Town Hall Elevator. I've been working on the Town Hall, as you all know, for many years, so I'm just trying to help if any questions come up with the elevator.
We also have Carolyn Brennan, who's here, you're here for the mobile food pantry, correct? And Lynn Booth, who's here for the Housing Authority.
I have a general question, if I can start. It has to do with assist. How do you plan to assist? What does that term mean?
Sure. So, we do the, basically, the administration of the grant funding itself, and we also assist in the bidding process for all of these types of projects, and the possible vendors. So, we do soliciting, the bid process, you know, and actually award the grant, you know, funding to whoever the vendors would be.
So, you control the funding?
With, always done with the town's permission.
They're kind of the go-between, the state and us, so they, their assistance is invaluable. They actually, from beginning to end, they wrote, for instance, the community plan, development plan that we have here, with total buy-in from us, but they put it all together. They put the applications together, there's a lot of reporting that needs to be done to the state when you, when you get done with this, if you get the grants. Some of it is pretty complex, and they help with that as well. So, across the board, they're pretty, pretty helpful.
And all invoices will be signed off by the town, any big decisions will be ran through the town. Nothing will be done behind, you know, doors.
Okay. So, we make the decisions, and you sign the checks?
Ultimately, right, right.
Okay.
Any other comments from the council? At this time, we can entertain any public comments? No? Okay. I guess we can close the meeting, and, let me just see here, I'll read a motion, and to accept the fiscal year 2018 community development strategy document as presented by John O'Leary of PVPC.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, guys.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. So, our second public hearing...
Pardon? Are we short?
Yeah, we're short.
Couple minutes.
Two minutes.
So, yeah, two minutes.
Two minutes.
Okay, so we'll jump back up to...
Item six.
I move that we move back out of order to approve the minutes.
Number six. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, if we could have a motion to accept the open session minutes of the January 23rd, 2018 Town Council meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we'll jump to another motion to accept the executive session minutes of the January 23rd, 2018 Town Council meeting.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. How much time do we have?
Two minutes.
We have a minute.
Can you do a one-minute subcommittee?
How about a second subcommittee?
Do you see the team?
That's right, that's right. I'm just back from vacation, so, I know you want me to, like, stretch for time, but I can't do it today. So, there is no update on the social media communications subcommittee. I'm sure, you know, I'm still trying to encourage people, if I have to kill another minute, to go to our website, which is eastlongmeadowma.gov. Scroll down to the bottom right, and sign up for the community information program. I know, I just, I was checking my emails while I was on vacation, I got a text message and, as well as another email, about, reminding me about the third quarter fiscal 2018 taxes. So, it's a great program to be part of, and I think I've killed enough time, so I'll turn it back over to the vice chair.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
So, our second public hearing, the reason for this public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed bylaw for the creation of a mixed-use district from Industrial Garden Park District for parcel 18-38-0, otherwise known as 330 Chestnut Street. Council members, again, Tom O'Connor, Paul Federici, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and myself, Mike Kane. Tom, could you read the notice, please? The public hearing is officially open.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February 13th, 2018, at 6:20 PM in the meeting room of the council meeting located at 328 North Main Streets, to address the creation of a mixed-use district from Industrial Garden Park District, parcel 18-38-0, 330 Chestnut Street. Information relating to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the county. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Tom. Don, can you do the honors, please?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Hope to see if I don't put you to sleep. Okay. Proposal of the creation of a mixed-use district and zoning map amendment, 5.10 mixed-use district, 5.10.1 purposes. The town shall have a mixed-use district, MU, entitled Mixed Use District, Town of East Long Meadow, as amended on file in the office of the town clerk. The purposes of the mixed-use district are, A, to revitalize struggling areas and spur economic development; B, to promote a village-style mix of retail, restaurants, offices, civic uses, and providing more housing opportunity and choices; C, to promote pedestrian and bicycle travel and a sense of community; D, to encourage economic development and increasing revenues. Toward these ends, the planning board is authorized to apply design guidelines, flexible dimensional regulations, and site standards to the review of site plans in the mixed-use district as set forth below. 5.10.2 applicability. The boundaries of the mixed-use district shall be defined on the zoning map of East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, as amended. The provision of this section shall apply only to the mixed-use district. All other permitted, all, strike that, all uses permitted in the Industrial Garden Park District under the zoning bylaw are permitted in the mixed-use district. See Section 5 and Table 3-1 for permitted uses. 5.10.3 Relationship to Site Plan Review. All uses permitted in the mixed-use district are subject to Section 7.4 Site Plan Review. 5.10.4 Permitted Uses and Structures. A, Mixed Use Development. Commercial and business uses, when integrated with residential uses as well as accessory uses, as provided for in the Table of Uses, 3-1, uses less than 10,000 square feet, may occur without restriction. One use with up to a maximum of 25,000 square feet, however, no more than two uses up to a maximum of 15,000 square feet each. B, Total Gross Floor Area Devoted to Commercial and Business Uses shall not exceed 10% of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use development. C, All signs permitted in the mixed-use district are subject to Section 5.8, signs as it relates to a business district. 5.10.5 Relationship to Special Permits. A, Massage Therapists and Licensed Massage Therapy Salons are subject to Section 7.2 Special Permits. B, Restaurants are subject to Section 7.2 Special Permits. Section 5.10.6 Dimensional Setback and Intensity Regulations. Uses in the mixed-use district shall meet the following requirements. A, Minimum Lot Area, 20 acres. B, Lot Coverage, Maximum 60%, Impervious. Minimum 40% Green Space. Maximum 40% Building Coverage. C, Residential Density, Maximum 16 units per acre. Minimum 10 units per acre. D, Height, Feet, Story, Maximum Four Stories, slash, 50 feet, up to 400 feet from the front lot line. Maximum Four Stories, slash, 60 feet, over 400 feet from the front lot line. E, Setbacks in Feet, Front 100, Rear 25, Side 50. F, Area Buffer in Feet, Minimum Rear 20, Minimum Side 20. G, Parking, Residential, 1.5 Spaces Per Unit. Commercial, Business, Four Spaces Per 1,000 Square Feet of Gross Floor Area. 5.10.7 Development Regulations for the Mixed Use District. A, Development, Redevelopment, and Reuse Will Generally Be Deemed Consistent with the Purposes of the Mixed Use District when the Planning Board has determined that the proposed project meets the following objectives. One, The Mixed Use Development Will Be Complementary to Nearby Buildings and Structures. Two, The Mixed Use Development Will Be Consistent with the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of East Long Meadow. Three, The Mixed Use Development Will Provide for High Density, Quality Development, Consistent with the Character of Building Types, Streetscapes, and Other Community Features Traditionally Found in Densely Settled Areas of the Town of East Long Meadow. And Four, The Mixed Use Development Will Have Adequate Water, Drainage, and Sewerage Systems, or Provide Upgrades to Existing Systems for Its Needs and Usage to Satisfy Town of East Long Meadow Requirements. B, The Commercial and Business Uses of the Mixed Use Development Shall Be Planned and Designed in an Integrated manner to Complement the Residential Uses and Help Foster Vibrant, Workable, Livable, and Attractive Neighborhoods Consistent with the Town of East Long Meadows' zoning bylaws and the section. C, Site Development. Location of Buildings and Structures. In Addition to the Requirements of Section 7.14 of this bylaw, the Following Development Regulations Apply in the Mixed Use District. One, Multiple Buildings on a Single Lot. A Lot in the Mixed Use District May Contain More Than One Structure with a Principal Use. The Planning Board May Grant Approval for Multiple Structures on One Lot Only Upon Making a Determination that the Proposed Development Contains a Mix of Commercial, Business, and Residential Uses. D, Site Plan Submission Requirements. All Uses in the Mixed Use District Shall Be Subject to Site Plan Review or Site Plan Approval as Applicable by the Planning Board. Applications and Procedures Shall Be in accordance with Section 7.4. E, Site Plan Approval Criteria. The Planning Board Shall Approve a Site Plan Only Upon a Determination that the Plan Meets the Requirements of this section and Section 7.4. 5.10.8 Off-Street Parking. A, The Planning Board May Allow for Additional Visitor Parking Spots Beyond the 1.5 Spaces Per Residential Unit if Deemed Appropriate, Given the Design, Layout, and Density of the Proposed Residential or Other Development. B, Notwithstanding Anything to the Contrary herein, the Use of Shared Parking to Fulfill Parking Demands Noted Above that Occur at Different Times of Day is Strongly Encouraged. Minimum Parking Requirements Above May Be Reduced by the Planning Board if the applicant can demonstrate that Shared Spaces Will Meet the Parking Demands by Using Accepted Methodologies, E.G., the Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Report, comma, ITE, Shared Parking Guidelines, or Other Approved Studies. C, Reduction in Parking Requirements. Notwithstanding Anything to the Contrary herein, any minimum required amount of parking may be reduced by the Planning Board if the applicant can demonstrate that the lesser amount of parking will not cause excessive congestion, endanger public safety, or that lesser amount of parking will provide positive environmental or other benefits, taking into consideration, one, shared use of off-street parking spaces serving other uses, having peak user demands at different times; two, impact of the parking requirement on the physical environment of the affected lot or the adjacent lots, including reduction in green space, destruction of significant existing trees and other vegetation, destruction of existing dwelling units, or loss of pedestrian amenities along public ways; and, three, such other factors as may be considered by the planning board. Finney.
Thank you, Don.
There's a chart.
And there's an attached chart.
Oh, can I read the chart to him?
No, the chart.
Just enter it into the record.
Welcome.
The chart is up front, for anybody that wants.
All right, and the chart is available for review up front.
At this time, do we have any council comments? Paul? Tom? Okay.
I have one, I think.
Kathy?
Yes. Just a question, this would be to the planning board, my question is.
We have a representative.
I see Mr. Richards.
And we have the developers here as well.
Under the very beginning of the bylaw, 5.10.1 purposes, toward these ends, the planning board is authorized to apply design guidelines, flexible dimensional regulations, and site standards to the review of site plans in the mixed-use district as set forth below. My question would be, how much, the use of the word "flexible" makes me just a little nervous, I guess is the word. If it's not...
Just for a minute. Ty, could you please come up to the bench here, just state your name and address for the record, please?
Maybe I can get to Gerald.
And anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
My name is Ty Richards, 566 Prospect Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Thank you. Planning Board member?
So, Mr. Richards, essentially, the word "flexible" makes me just a little nervous, over actually nailing down concrete dimensions, is my question? And if we put it in a bylaw that way, then don't we have to live with that bylaw beyond the successful implementation of this project?
I'm not really sure why we use the word flexible.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how to answer the question any more than that. I mean, we'd like to see the developer's plans, we'd like to see what was proposed, and...
I understand that, that you'll do, the planning board under the Site Plan Review would do due diligence, and it's a given that the developer will cooperate and do all that. The question is, if it, the word remains flexible, who, is there wiggle room for any developer, not necessarily these folks, to change horses midstream on dimensions? And then the word flexible allows them that latitude, is the question, going forward in subsequent years?
That would be a possibility, if you want to tighten that up, I suppose we could do that.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but...
No, 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 I'm just, that was my question.
It's a good question.
Can I go?
Certainly.
Hi, I'm John Tykina, I'm with the property owner and developer, Eminem, East Long Meadow. Hi. The word flexible got in there as we started the process, working with the planning board and with planning staff. The thought was, because this is very different than what we have, so the thought was that if you see the regulations that are in here that are not flexible in any way, are the edges, the boundaries. So, we have the sufficient, you know, substantial setback from Chestnut, we have the appropriate setback, in fact, you know, buffer from the sides. So, the thought was, like, okay, we're going to provide really strong boundaries and buffers for the edges, and then the flexibility, the creativity, if you will, comes in on the inside. So, you know, the inside, so where we can get creative to say, okay, what is the actual dimension, you know, that we want to have, for example, for the sidewalk in front of the stores? Is it, you know, we can talk about, is it 12 feet, is it 16 feet, is it 18 feet? And the thought was, you know what, we don't want to prescribe that, we want to be able to work with the planning board and with the staff on what that dimension is. So, the hard and fast are, it's not going to go any closer to the street than this, it's not going to go any closer to the sides than that, it's not going to go any taller than this. And that was, you know, we said, okay, we're going to set those hard edges, and then the flexibility will come on the inside, where then with Design Guidelines that the board, that the board will set up, or the guidelines or standards, I think they're guidelines. So, that the planning board is going to set up for that review, that will again, kind of, not tighten down, but kind of formalize what that flexibility is going to be, so that we understand that, you know, in front of a restaurant, we might want a wider sidewalk so we have outdoor dining, but in front of a hair salon, you might not need as wide a sidewalk, so you might have a planter, you know, a little more of a planter there, or a sitting area, you know, or a bench, you know, something that the sidewalk doesn't have to be as wide. So, it's that type of flexibility, but it's all intended to be on the inside, not on the outside. And then, in terms of the switching horses, other people, the next public hearing talks about applying this district, and right now, you're only applying it to one place.
Yes.
So, it'll be fully within the council's purview to say, we would like this going other places or not. Right now, you're trying one, and see how it goes, and, you know, and you see how that works. But, that's how, kind of, as we work with the, you know, the thought was, hard edges, make sure the boundaries are clear, but some creativity and flexibility to work with the planning board on, you know, how we bring this forward.
Based on Scale and Use.
So, can I also, because this mixed use is one, but if you had a mixed use someplace else, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I was sitting at most of those meetings too, the next one might be a different mix of businesses and, you know, retail and apartments, so you can't really, you have to have that flexibility, don't you?
We think so, but...
Because you can't prescribe what's going to be inside of the area, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And the ratio is 90% housing and 10% retail, commercial?
Correct, it's predominantly a residential project, and the thought was to keep the commercial small, it's really, it's complementary services to provide that mixed-use atmosphere, if you will. We liken it to the clubhouse, you know, it's just another part of the clubhouse, you know, but it might be, you know, again, a hair salon, a restaurant, a, you know, daycare, whatever, you know, something like that, that, you know, again, serves for our residents, but then also serves, you know, kind of that general neighborhood as well.
Okay.
But it is predominantly a residential project.
I do have another question, but it doesn't speak, about the project, but it doesn't speak to the actual language of the bylaw, so I'm not sure if that's appropriate to ask it now.
I would think, while they're here, that would be a good time.
This project is not age-restricted, if I recall.
Correct.
So, there is the potential for families to purchase a unit, or rent, or buy a condo, or whatever.
Yes.
How then, so, as a career educator, my question is, I know you can't necessarily pull a number out of the air, but how do you create a number that talks about the impact that a project of this scope could have on the school district?
Well, there are actually two things. One, there is a, that's actually out of New Jersey, the Rutgers Urban Land Institute that actually publishes those numbers, that says, you know, based on this type of housing unit, you're going to get this many kids, you know, per 100 units, or whatever the case may be. And you can use that to project.
Right, I know, it can't be a hard, fast number, but there is...
That's one way. But, the other thing, you know, and my challenge to Dr. Listkin, who runs that thing, is he needs to update his work, because we build these, we, this is what we do, and we're finding that those numbers are tremendously lower than...
The formula.
Than the formula. So, we have a mixed-use project that's, you know, right in the community of New Jersey, in Hamilton, you know, it's 320 units, you know, fairly large, you know, with townhouses and condominiums, just the type of housing that we're talking about here, and there's three children.
Children.
Schoolchildren.
Yeah.
Now, you might get some two- and three-year-olds, but again, as those, as households form, and they go, you know, they're in a one- or two-bedroom condominium, you know, that two-year-old wants to, you know, they move on to other housing.
Right.
So, we're finding that the market is, you know, a little bit of, you know, of the household formation, but it's much more of, you know, empty nesters moving down, or, you know, single and two-person households that, you know, that form that don't have children, which is the predominance of the households. And in East Long Meadow, for better, you know, I think for better, I wouldn't even say for worse, that family has many other better housing choices in East Long Meadow for their housing dollar than our project. We're serving a little bit different market. We don't throw them away, but again, they're choices, they have a better choice. But, as we work with the planning board, we're going to pull those numbers up and talk about what we think they're going to be, and make sure that, you know, we have the bus stop, or whatever it is, to make sure we have that. But, again, we think it's going to be very, very low.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well, since we started this conversation.
Okay.
I did attend one of the planning board meetings, and in that discussion, when you first talked about this, there was no discussion about apartments, it was condos and townhouses. When did apartments come into the play?
Always were. The thought was always that particularly the units that are above the retail stores, that they would be rental, rental housing, and that in the back, you know, and then behind those mixed-use units would be units that could be for rent or for sale as a flat, you know, a two-bedroom flat, you know, an apartment, or a condominium, and then there would be for-sale townhomes as well, that we would expect would be totally for sale. We think that mix is what is desired by the market, it is a market that is not being served in East Long Meadow. We think that, you know, folks, as they downsize out of their, you know, out of their larger home in East Long Meadow or the surrounding area, that we could totally foresee a situation where they choose to rent a unit in East Long Meadow because they still want to be close to the kids and grandkids, you know, but they might own another home, whether it be in Florida, or on the Cape, or Black Island, or whatever, and we think that, you know, we're finding more and more seniors and empty nesters are going to a rental situation and putting that down, like a home that's more of a, you know, either a summer, you know, a warm place or a summer place. So, we absolutely envision that there would be rental housing. We call it concierge living, so it is a high-end rental.
Starting at what?
Starting at $1,800 to $2,000 a month for a unit. You know, $2 to, $2 a square foot, you know, on par with the condominium, the dollars per month to buy the condo or rent the apartment are almost the same, it's just how do you choose to allocate your capital? But, we think that's a very vibrant aspect of it, to be in the neighborhood and in the market. We think it provides that vitality that that mixed-use community is looking for, and quite frankly, from our standpoint, we like to build and own and, you know, keep and stay in the community and live, work, and play here, so...
You also mentioned, in the meeting that I did attend, and I know what I heard, in the properties, that you're, you're the property management, and that's where you make your money.
Yes.
So, as a property manager, you were going to take care of all the services for that property?
Correct.
So, that's still the plan?
Yes. Water, sewers, garbage, snowplow, cut the grass, run the lights.
And you're going to maintain the same market rates for the homes, and guarantee that the homes aren't undersold, or the apartments aren't rented out at a lower rate?
We, yeah, we expect that we're going to get that rent and keep that rent. We will be a different product than exists. I found one in 15 miles that's even close to what we're talking about. Very high-end product, very high-end finishes, first-class landscaping, beautiful. That's our standard, it's beautiful.
So, to that end, if I could jump on that, I recall when you first came before the council, in the past year, you brought some visuals...
Yes, we had pretty pictures.
Of what your, I think it was Cherry Hill?
Cherry Hill, yep.
New Jersey project would look like, and I think that's helpful for residents to get that visual, I know it is for me, short of driving to Cherry Hill to say, oh, this is what one of their products looks like. You just referenced that there's something similar within 50 miles of here?
No, 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 there's a, it's not my project.
No, no, I understand that.
Another rental real estate project that is...
Comparable to the type of product, okay.
Comparable in market, you know, that it's $2,000 a month, et cetera, but it's not mine. I mean, it was actually one of the things we were, like, you know, I apologize, we haven't been through this process of, like, what do you, I mean, I can come and bring some pictures and, you know, a little depiction of what we think it's going to look like. Again, we're a little challenged, because, you know, we have to keep working with the planning board, but I think if we can give you a little look and feel, you know, for the second reading, maybe that would be helpful.
For me, I think seeing a picture...
Pictures worth a thousand words.
A thousand words.
And I didn't know we read it into, like, literally read it into the record, so I...
That might be helpful, just to have a...
No, we should, that, very brief, you know?
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Few minutes, you know, few minutes, you know? Like a Super Bowl commercial.
I would just ask, your Cherry Hill development, do you have anything, is there any pictures, like, real-time pictures online?
People online.
Yes, so, obviously, this, you know, this project will be different based on, you know, how you put it together with planning and such, but at least people would get a general, a general idea on materials used, landscaping, you know, roof lines, windows, you know, it would probably be very helpful, so people could look at those projects in Cherry Hill.
Yeah, lots of, lots of brick, lots of, lots of, you know, composite siding. We have to, you know, bring, you know, suburban Jersey, Philadelphia, to New England quaint, which is my preferred motif here, I think New England quaint is what we're looking for, more like, people keep saying, like, Mashpee Commons, okay, I can do that. You know, it's, again, a picture's worth a thousand words, but that is, you know, but in terms of scale, and, you know, Cherry Hill is, you know, three to five stories, so a little taller than what we're talking about here, but you get the sense, you can get the sense of the quality, the clubhouse, you know, the amenities, we have a, you know, we'll have a concierge there, so the clubhouse is staffed from 8:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night. You know, it opens at 6:00 in the morning for people, you know, that work out, you know, et cetera, and, you know, do their exercise, but we have literally staffed people there that, you know, right now, the biggest thing we do is receive Amazon packages, but, you know, but again, you have someone on site, so even if, even if you buy, and you purchase, and you live in the townhouse, or you live in a condominium, and, you know, you need the plumber to come, you know, the plumber's going to come and change your kitchen faucet out, or whatever, and, you know, we will go and escort, we'll meet the plumber, you know, and take care of that services for our residents. You know, again, because people are out, living their life, they don't necessarily want to wait for the plumber, so, so even, you know, and then obviously, with rentals, we take care of all of that, but, you know, even for our homeowners, we, you know, again, they're all part of the community, and that's very critically important to us.
John, what's the name of the development in Cherry Hill, if they wanted to look it up?
It's Garden State Park. It was the old Cherry Hill racetrack, 225 acres. But there, we have over a million square feet of commercial space, and it will ultimately be 1,600 residential units.
In Cherry Hill?
In Cherry Hill, not here.
No, no.
How high is it?
You need another zone change.
Yeah, but there, I mean, that different zoning, you know, and we shared that zoning with staff and planning, and, you know, so there, I mean...
You said 225 acres, how many acres are you roughly dealing with?
Forty.
Forty, yeah.
So, there you go on the scales.
Yeah. Thank you.
Don?
So, just to follow up, you know, some of the previous comments, I agree with Councilor Hill about maybe just reeling back a little bit of the discretionary in terms of, like, you agree that you have no problem with more fixed site, but more discretion by the planning board within the four corners of the building, so maybe we can put some verbiage in there. And here, based on reading some of the minutes, is it still true that it's potentially up to a perfect world, up to 1,000 people could be in there, correct?
Yes.
One of the things I remember from my planning board days, and I'm sure it's probably still the case, is that the planning board has a discretion to waive elements of Site Plan Review, certain elements, is that still true? Todd?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I would think that when we're dealing with projects of this magnitude, whether it's this one, or another 20-acre piece plus in East Long Meadow, that it should not be discretionary of the planning board to waive a traffic study. I think a traffic study should not be discretionary.
It's the one expert I brought with me.
Yeah, well, I don't, but bottom line is that if you have a particular, now, again, one of the other things I remember on the planning board, as much as we were not approving a project, we're approving a bylaw.
Right.
So, we can't necessarily look at it for this. It's easy to do it, and I'm guilty of it, and I'm going to do it, but at the same time, I have to get past it and look at this being in another part of East Long Meadow, and a different planning board at some future date, saying, you know what, this thing's beautiful, we love it, let's waive the traffic study, and we have another 1,000 people or more coming in. So, I think we need some tougher language that I'll defer back to the planning board, of having, you're aware of the elements that can be waivable, and to perhaps reel them back, and say, project of this magnitude, the planning board shall not waive the traffic study and any other elements that you feel are appropriate, architectural review, things of that nature. Again, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem for the board.
Thank you.
Or the develop, we don't intend on...
No, I understand.
We don't intend on seeking any waivers.
I didn't think you would get it on this case, but, again, we're not approving, you know, we're approving a standard garden variety, pardon the semi-attempt of a pun, we're approving a plan or a bylaw that could have consequences that were innocently not intended, you know, some future, future project. Thank you.
I would ask, any comments from the public? And if so, could you please come forward, state your name and address? Marilyn?
You want me to stand here? Okay.
Do you want to sit here?
No, no, that's all right. Good evening, I'm Marilyn Richards, and the disclaimer is, I'm not related to him.
Well, there, that's bad.
Speak for yourself.
Good evening, I'm Marilyn Richards, and the disclaimer is I'm not related to him.
Well, they don't get that bad.
You can speak for yourself.
Thank you, okay.
Speak up for the family.
I apologize for some of my comments because I was not able to attend the planning board's public hearing, and was probably would have been better suited had they been given at that time. First of all, the numbers are wrong. You have down for mixed-use district, section 5.10, that's currently our elderly residential in our zoning bylaws. So, I don't know what numbers these, this particular bylaw should fall under, but you don't want to be under elderly residential. That's what these numbers are right now. So, that's just a former planning board pickup.
Pickup.
I agree with Counselor Anderson on his comments of tightening up the language. This is a huge project, but we're not talking about a project, we're talking about the bylaw that governs a project of this magnitude, and flexible just doesn't fit. I circled it ten times. Under section 5.10.2 applicability, there's a sentence in there that says, "All uses permitted in the industrial garden park district under the zoning bylaw are permitted in the mixed-use district." Do you really mean that?
No, it should be stripped. It's a typo.
Thank you, thank you.
It was a remnant from when it was an overlay.
From the overlay district, okay. Well, I thought so, but it's there.
I, I had it, I had it too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Under, at the bottom of the page, under 5.10.4 permitted uses and structures, item C says, "All signs permitted in the mixed-use district are subject to section 5.8 signs as it relates to the business district." Now, we're talking about a mixed-use district which is primarily residential, at least that's the way the bylaw reads today. And according to your table of uses, home offices are going to be permitted. And, you know, I'm not sure, but perhaps smaller signs might be welcome for these home offices. I don't know how you plan to play out the project, but for the bylaw, I would like to see perhaps a different sign component to the residential piece and the commercial piece, not put the both in the same, in the same category. Just my thoughts.
I think it's a fair point, if I may jump in, because we're talking about Mashpee Commons. Some of the signage you would see over there for a Dunkin' Donuts would not be the same as the Dunkin' Donuts on Route Six, you know, our twenty-eight. So, they do have some restrictions. Sorry for jumping, but I thought I'd follow up on what you said.
Okay, I have a few more, I'm sorry.
That's why we're here. Let's talk about.
Section 5.10.6, it says dimensional setback and intensity regulations. I know our zoning bylaws get pretty intense, but I think you mean density. I think. I'm not assuming anything. Going on, the parking formula. I've talked about this at the planning board's public hearing, one of the hearings that I had attended. And for the residential piece, you're looking at 1.5 spaces per unit.
Marilyn, can you speak more into the microphone, Mr. Mackey?
You can't hear me?
No, I'm here, but somebody, I'm sorry, somebody on the table is covering their microphone.
Oh, that would be me.
So, I'm getting like a thunderstorm.
Okay, parking. Residential component, 1.5 spaces per unit. Now, in the conceptual site design that we keep hearing about, you talk about two bedroom apartments with master suites, but you're also in this bylaw talking about townhomes and condos. I don't know if they're all restricted to two bedrooms apiece, and there's no bedroom restriction in this bylaw at all. And I'm not telling you, you have to do that. We have planned unit residential, which is a condominium, and we have a three-bedroom restriction for that. We have planned adult residential in East Long Meadow, and there is also a three-bedroom restriction for that. So, I, I found it a little bit hard to wrap my head around 1.5 spaces per unit, not really knowing how large these units would be, because it's not written anywhere. Generally, it's two, it's a, or it's a, a space per bedroom. That's, in the, in the bylaws that I've looked at around the area, it's a, it's a space per bedroom. So, in a, in a two-bedroom apartment, you would factor in two spaces because you're dealing with empty nesters, adults, professionals with no children, they all have cars, some of us have more than one because we have a sport model. So, I'm just saying that there, there are different, I mean, you're talking about luxury apartments, so you're talking about Porsches and BMWs that they bring out in the spring. So, I just wanted to throw that in in terms of parking. I think 1.5 is a little narrow, plus they've, they've brought the commercial piece down to four spaces, and our planned business development is four and a half per thousand square feet. So, that's even a little bit more restrictive to what the town has done in previous mixed Just a few more. I went through, and I know that this whole process is subject to site plan review. We have not had any apartment development in our town with the exception of our elderly residential. That's age-restricted, and it's governed by state statute. So, those are the controls which, other than our town bylaws, elderly residential is governed by state statute. Planned adult residential is also governed by our town bylaws and state statute. It's also age-restricted, fifty-five and older. Planned unit residential, our first condominium development in town, is governed by our bylaws and special permit. Planned business development is a mixed-use of retail, commercial, professional, town offices, restaurants, and that's governed by our town bylaws and special permit. Now, we're dealing with mixed-use, which is a huge project, and it's not age-restricted, and I don't understand why it's not under special permit. The town, I mean, we're, we're dealing with a bylaw, we've seen conceptual renderings, what it could be, but I've learned a long time ago that rules change, faces change, we're dealing with a bylaw, and this bylaw should in some way protect our town. And if we brought special permit into the process, that would give the planning board and the town a little bit more leverage in this contract that you go into with the, with the developer, to be able to assure that what, what's happening is in the best interest of everybody. So, it's a lobby for special permit. You shouldn't be afraid of special permit. It's just, you know, everybody just basically understands what the rules are, the town has the contract, the developer has the contract. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Marilyn, where was that comment to be placed?
I'm sorry?
What was the subsequent addressing in the?
Just now about special permit? Oh, they, that had to do with...
No, but where does that fall in the document?
In here?
Yeah.
It doesn't.
It's not. It's not, it's not in here. The only, the only process that will govern this, this proposal is site plan review, and I'm not trying to minimize the value of site plan review, but special permit has its own benefits for our town. And, you know, we've seen projects come in and they've gotten approval, and then businesses have changed hands and, or the project has changed, and so, you know, you just, I've just learned a question. Thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, those are great ones.
Ralph?
Good evening.
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I'd first like to say that I think this is a great project. I think we need a district like this. I'm a hundred percent for it. My concern, being a former planning board member, is how do we tighten up the regulations with regards to the district? It's not to do with this development, it's just to do with the district as a whole. Going through the bylaw, I did notice in the table under section 3.031, I think it was an unintended consequence, they changed some of the wording, they added, under the standards and conditions, it says it's permitted in the elderly residential district, and then they added, "And the mixed-use district, including townhouses, condominiums, and apartments." By adding the, including townhouses, condominiums, and apartments, that also now affects the elderly residential district because that's allowed under the elderly residential. So, I guess my question comes in, is by changing this language, basically, we're saying in the elderly residential, they can change it to have apartments and townhouses and stuff, and I don't realize, I don't know if the board realizes that or wants that.
Point.
A multifamily house or multifamily dwelling is a multifamily dwelling. That's one. I've only got a couple. I think Marilyn hit most of mine. The minimum setback in the table, which is 3.2 dimensional and density regulations, I noticed that the minimum setback is a hundred feet, but the minimum setback for an accessory is only twenty-five feet. In all other zones, typically, the minimum setback for an accessory is equal to the minimum setback or even more than that, such as in the residential zone. If you have a fifty-foot minimum setback, an accessory structure is sixty feet back. I'm not quite sure what this was, I mean, and again, I just don't think an accessory should be in front of the main building.
We, we agree in your, in your, I apologize, I've answered. We agree in your, and your bylaw agrees, the accessory structure is not permitted in the front yard.
Actually, that's not quite true. We, there was one on Maple Street that was allowed in the front yard. It happened to be a garage because it met the setback requirement of that zone. And again, that's, it's a gray area, so I'd rather see, it say, hey, if the setback is a hundred feet, the accessory setback's a hundred feet. I'm going to reiterate the signage. The signage here basically falls under, they're suggesting using the regulations for the business district, with this being a ninety percent residential. What my suggestion would be is a separate paragraph with regards to what's allowed for signage. Every district has their own signage requirements. I'd like to see that for the mixed-use, for a simple reason being, down the road, there may be a little torque that we want to do in the mixed-use under signage, and the way it's written now, that would affect the entire business district throughout the whole town instead of just the mixed-use district. I'm curious, this parcel that we're talking about zoning is, correct me if I'm wrong, just over forty acres?
Correct, forty-five.
So, I guess my question is, for a development to go in, you only need twenty acres. Was there a reason that we chose twenty acres instead of the forty acres, what the zone is?
Sort of remnant of when it was an overlay?
And the reason I ask this is because if we leave it at twenty acres, you could actually split this with an A and R, once the district is formed, you would have two developments, twenty acres each, which would mean you would have two buildings that could be twenty-five thousand square feet. You could have four buildings at fifteen thousand square feet each on the forty-acre parcel. So, it would be my thought to change it from the twenty acres to the forty acres. And the rest of it Marilyn sit on, Don sit on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you? Good, thanks. Greg Thompson, 426 Porter Road. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I just wanted to say, certainly, change in this town is always welcome. The property that we're talking about specifically certainly is in need of some upgrades and moving forward the future. I just had a couple of questions based on the rest of us here in East Long Meadow as property owners, as business owners. So, I just had three questions, if I could just run through them. Wondering what the effect will be on the saturation of the housing market, the retail market, the restaurant market. By, right now, there's a set number of housing units or available parcels that we can build houses on or residential structures. We're looking to add five to seven to ten percent residence, increase in residence, including restaurants and retail, that does not exist now. So, so it's increased competition for both businesses and also for us as homeowners. Are we saturating the market by adding this much residential units to the town of East Long Meadow? I think we'd be, we'd be need to say that no one from East Long Meadow or no one who is now considering moving on into East Long Meadow would consider moving into something like this. As a resident of East Long Meadow, a longtime resident, it sounds great, I would consider moving into it, but I'm wondering, as a homeowner, does it have an impact on my value because we're saturating the market with, with this, with this huge development that is not allowed by law? If it's allowed by law, that's one thing, but we're willing to, I don't want to be, you know, overgeneralized, but it's, we're giving away the farm, it seems like to me, because nowhere else do we allow everything, right, the kitchen sink on any piece of property in this town. We don't allow that anyway. So, to, to give that up and say, you can put, not anything, but basically anything you want on this one piece of property, is that fair to the rest of us in this town, business owners, residents of this town? My second question was, does the council now commit then, if we approve something like this, to any property owner with twenty acres to allow to be rezoned as mixed-use? I would think that would be only fair. So, if there's other twenty-acre property owners in town, can we then say, no, you can't do this mixed-use, even though we've allowed someone else to do that? Okay, so if we can just think about that going forward. There's a lot of twenty-acre parcels in this town. I know some of them are farms, and they would have some restrictions on paying back taxes and such of that, but you look at Meadowbrook Farm, you look at Fenway Golf, certainly other pieces of property in the, in the commercial district could apply to that. So, I'm wondering if, if by allowing this, we're also going to say, yes, anyone else who wants to do the same thing, thus increasing the amount of residential options, restaurants in town, office space, is that, again, fair to the rest of us who are already preexisting in this town? And then a third question I'd just like to ask is, I know the medical buildings on Maple Street, there was an agreement in terms of, some mitigation in terms of contributing to improvements in infrastructure, certainly with a thousand new residents, businesses, restaurants, retail, there's going to be an impact in traffic, both vehicular and walking on Chestnut Street. So, what is the town looking for in terms of mitigation for those sorts of things going forward as such a big project as this is? So, I'll go sit in my seat if you want to address those for me. Thank you.
I may be wrong, but if I may, as far as like the mitigation of like the, the traffic, the property on the corner of, was it Dwight Road and Maple?
Yep, that's under a diff.
Not only that, but, but the agreement to that, the builders of that are not doing the infrastructure repairs. Our town and Long Meadow are splitting the cost of the, the all of repairs of the roads and the intersection there.
But they're contributing upfront monies, I believe, Bruce left, to pay for a lot of those substantial amount of that, I believe. If not for that project, we would not be doing those improvements.
Well, they, they are contributing to us, East Long Meadow.
Yeah, so I'm asking, are we going to ask the same thing?
The way I believe the process went was, the Long Meadow, the buildings are in Long Meadow, the medical buildings. Therefore, as soon as their property taxes kick in, that money's going towards their share of the, of the road improvements, which I believe is roughly two million dollars, if I've got the figure right, two-point-one all the way up to Chestnut Street. is roughly $2 million, if I've got the figure right, 2.1 all the way up to Chestnut Street, because on our section, I'm not an owner of the town, but I am a taxpayer, we, the building that's going to be built, the, I don't know, nursing home is an archaic term, but you know what I mean?
Medical facilities, yeah.
That is, yeah, thank you. That is a nonprofit, so we will not be getting any tax money from that. So the builders are subsidizing us, until such time as the current East Long Meadow Skilled Nursing Center becomes a memory impairment unit, which for some reason is a for-profit, so it is the way, they will pay tax. And once that happens, then that money will be kicked in, and so we will no longer get any subsidies, or we will get a lower subsidy. But you are right in the fact that they are kicking in to, but in this case, I'm assuming, and I should never assume, one of my professors told me that, but, and I won't say why. But anyways, this is going to be from, from day one, effectively, it's going to be, it's going to generate property taxes, you know, there's no, it doesn't sound like there's any nonprofits in this group. So for a $100 million development, I'm guessing, you know, which is a figure that's been bandied about, I'm guessing the taxes will be significant, so, you know, I mean, it would be great if they pitched in, but I don't, I would hate to see the project.
And the reason why I ask is because, I'm sorry.
Really, we need to take public comments tonight?
Not back and forth.
Not back and forth.
And that, that project really doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking. So certainly, the comments will be considered.
Yeah, so, I mean, welcome any other comments from the public at this point, Mr. Turnerberg.
My name is Dick Turnerberg, I live in 243 Summers Road. I'm 76 years old, and I'm thinking of selling the house, so what brought me down here tonight was my interest in possibly moving in here, in this place when they built it. And I was wondering if there's any information out, any brochures or something that discusses the penthouses, the rental apartments?
Come on, you're a penthouse. Townhouse.
Oh, townhouses.
Might be a little early.
I'm just, you know, curious if there's anything out that discusses amenities that are.
Way early for that.
Okay, well, you know, I just, I think when Marilyn mentioned that Porsches and BMWs, I think that might rule me out right after that.
I drive a Honda.
That's what I have to tell you. But anyways, so, there will be, I guess you're not going to go forward until they approve the zoning bylaw?
We have to get the bylaw.
That has to be approved before anything happens.
This public hearing will be continued, so we'll keep gaining information as time goes on.
So, okay, so I guess there's more information to come.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? So, this was our first reading, so there'll be, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the creation of the mixed-use district for a second reading with that, with said reading scheduled for February 27, 2018, at 6:40 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I would just like to comment that a very large amount of extremely valid questions have come before us in the last 40 minutes. So, Mr. Richards, does the planning board have a meeting between now and the second, two weeks from now, so that?
Next Tuesday night.
Perfect. So, will you be in a position then to address some of these concerns on your board, so that we'll have some better direction?
I'll talk to our chairman, let him know what took place tonight, and we'll see if we can get it on the agenda.
Good, thank you.
And if not, then let us know, we can continue our.
Continue, right, we don't want to inordinately tie up the developer.
Summarize some of the points that were brought out tonight, I mean, this is obviously not every one of them, but just some of the big ones. Obviously, you know, the defining unit, and I'm kind of in agreement with Marilyn Richards about unit being bedrooms. I mean, the difference between 1.5 parking spaces for a one-bedroom unit versus a four-bedroom is night and day in terms of that, and plus also the mention of parking regarding employees. Concierge service, there's going to be employees there, that should be an addition, and not be, it should be additional parking. The 20 acres versus the 40 acres, the A&R point brought up by Mr. Page was a fair point. If that's not going to be an issue, I think that's something they should be considering as well. The other points that were also brought up is about having it under special permit. I think that's a, that's a fine idea, I think we have, it's obviously demonstrated here, what I can see, and also in the past, that we have a very good working relationship with the petitioner and the town, and I think the concern would be is, should the project not work, and that another property owner buys it and decides not to market it the same way, that it would be a matter of right, whereas a restaurant, if a restaurant were sold, they'd have to also go under special permit. So I think having the special permit requirement protects the integrity of the project, not only now, but also in the future, and I don't think the requirements of a special permit are going to be any more burdensome, because of, unless I'm missing a point here, but anyway.
Can you? Thanks. You're welcome. Can I, can I speak on that? As we talked about, again, through the process, and we went back and forth to the planning board, from an ownership standpoint, from a developer's standpoint, particularly as we move through this bylaw process and the guidelines, we, from the beginning, our goal was to have a permitted use, not to have a special permit. So as we worked with staff and the planning board, our common work together was to draft a bylaw that we all felt comfortable with, that allowed that as a permitted use. So, and, and this is the product that we, that we collectively came out with. So, I would like to have the same type of conversation and work with the council, to say, I would like to work on a bylaw that gets us to a bylaw that we are all comfortable with, that has us as a permitted use, and not as a special permit. That is just, again, just an ownership preference. If somebody tells me, no, not happening that way, then we'll all act accordingly. But that, so I don't want, you know, I don't want to be, no special permit, not at all. It was, our working relationship together with staff and the planning board was, let's draft a bylaw that allows us to have a permitted use. So, if, and then the planning board, as part of their site plan, and I'd, correct me if I'm, if I'm going to state this, is also going to have a design guideline as part of their review that you provided for here, that will provide for further oversight and guidance on the part of the board on the development. So that is, that was the working relationship that we had, as we collaboratively came up in the public meeting process, to get us to the bylaw, and we'd like to continue that if we can. Now, again, if you tell me, no, you know, then we're going to work that way. But, you know, the special permit process has, is, has its uncertainties that we would prefer to address now as part of the bylaw process, not, and not have that. So, again, I don't know, we're going to go back to the planning board, and that's great, we can go back to the planning board and have a conversation as well. I just want you to understand how that came up, like, I was in a special permit, like, we had that conversation at that level, it wasn't, it wasn't really known. I apologize for.
No, 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 you're, you're fine, I can, I can continue having this dialogue right now, but that would be, maybe, maybe I'll defer that to later, I guess, because I'm watching his.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
But we'll go back to the planning board, I assume we'll.
Yeah, we'll defer it back to planning, and then we'll revisit this at a later date, so.
So continuing to the 27?
Yes.
And we'll work.
Next Tuesday night, we'll be talking about these four issues.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
And more, I mean, there are many comments here, so it's very helpful. Thank you.
Do they vote on?
We voted on it, yes.
We voted to close the hearing, and to continue.
We voted to continue the meeting, and we gave you the date and time, right?
Yep.
I'm confused because now we're talking back.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We still have the other one.
You have to answer.
We can ask Janie, did we vote on it? Did you hear us?
Yes.
I was just trying to talk to my wife.
So our next public hearing is regarding the zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 18-38-0. The reason for the continuance of this public hearing from January 23 is to read for the first time a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 18-38-0, otherwise known as 330 Chestnut Street, from industrial garden district to a mixed-use district. Council members, again, Tom O'Connor, Paul Fetterich, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and myself, Mike Payne. Tom, could you read that notice, please?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February 13 at 6:30 PM in the media room of Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 18-38-0, 330 Chestnut Street, from industrial garden park district to mixed-use district. Information related to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thanks, Tom. So, as I stated, this will be a first reading of a zoning map amendment bylaw. At the planning board's meeting on November 21, 2017, East Long Meadow Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend that a proposed zoning bylaw amendment creating a new section 5-10, mixed-use district, including revisions to Table 3-1, East Long Meadow Schedule of Use Regulations, and Table 3-2, Dimensional and Density Regulations. At its regularly scheduled meeting on January 2, 2017, East Long Meadow Planning Board voted 4 to 0 to recommend that the zoning map be amended by the designating, designating the parcel known as 330 Chestnut Street, and the assessor's map and parcel number 18-38-0 be rezoned as mixed-use district. Please refer to the Schedule of Use Regulations known as Table 3-1 of the zoning bylaws, and the Dimensional and Density Regulations known as Table 3-2 of the zoning bylaws, which are available for review by the public in the town clerk's office. So at this time, I welcome council comments? None? Public comments?
Greg? Just a quick, Greg Thompson, Porter Road, wondering if in the past we've ever had petitioners ask for zoning map changes like this, whether it be from residential to commercial, or industrial to residential, and have denied those just on face value. So, is there precedent that we've had before, and does this set precedent, again, for any 40-acre parcels for a petitioner request for mixed-use zoning? Are they now, by right, going to be able to have that in the future? I know we can't talk about it, but that's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks. So if there's no other comments at this point, I'd entertain a motion to continue the public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 18-38-0 for a second reading, with said reading scheduled for February 27, 2018, at 6:50 PM. All in favor? So, our next public hearing is regarding new zoning bylaws for adult stores. The reason for this public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed zoning bylaw relating to adult stores, clubs, and video theaters. Tom, do you have a reading for it?
I do have that reading. First reading of.
I'm sorry. Wrong Tom. If you could read the legal notice.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February 13, 2018, at 6:45 PM in the media room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a proposed new zoning bylaw relating to adult stores, clubs, and video theaters. Information relating to this bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. And, Tom, before we start, council members, Tom O'Connor, Paul Fetterich, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and myself, and if you could read.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
First reading of the proposed zoning, new zoning bylaw, definitions and special criteria relating to adult stores, clubs, and video theaters. Add to Section 8, Adult Bookstore Definition, An Establishment Having as a substantial or significant portion of its stock in trade books, magazines, and other matter which are distinguished by characterized or characterized by their emphasis depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 262, Section 31. Adult Club, Establishment Displaying Live Nudity for Its Patron, An Establishment Having as a substantial or significant portion of its entertainment, a person or persons performing in a state of nudity, or distinguished by an emphasis on matter depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 262, Section 31. Adult Theater, An Enclosed Building Using for, Presenting, Used for Presenting Material Distinguished by an emphasis on matter depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 262, Section 31. Adult Use, An Adult Bookstore, Adult Club, Adult Theater, Adult Video Store, and Adult Paraphernalia Store, as defined in this bylaw. Adult Video Store, An Establishment Having as a substantial or significant portion of its stock in videos, other matters which are distinguished by emphasis on matter depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 262, Section 31. Adult Paraphernalia Store, An Establishment Having as a substantial or significant portion of its stock, devices, objects, tools, or toys, which are distinguished by or characterized by their association with sexual activity, including sexual conduct or sexual excitement, as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 262, Section 31. Adult Uses, Not permitted in any zone except in industrial garden park by special permit, refer to definitions and section under special permit. By adding a section under special permit, 7.39.1, Criteria for Adult Uses. In addition to the requirements of Section 7.2 of the East Long Meadow bylaws, and for an application to be considered, complete, the following additional criteria must be met. Adult Uses May Not Be Located, A, Within 1,000 Feet of Each Other, B, Within 1,000 Feet of the nearest lot line of a residential district, C, Within 1,000 Feet of a Place of Worship, D, Within 1,000 Feet of School Property Line or Other Nonprofit Educational Use, Library or Museum, E, Within 1,000 Feet of a Playground or a Park. Number 2, Signers Must Meet All Requirements of Section 5.8 of this bylaw, except that no advertisement, display, or other promotional material is to be visible to the public from any public way, including but not limited to pedestrian walkways. 3, If the adult use allows for the showing of films or videos within the premise, the booths in which the films or videos are viewed shall not be closed off by curtains, doors, or screens, or any other materials. All shall be clearly seen from the center of the establishment. 4, The application for the special permit shall contain the following, A, Names and Address of the Legal Owner of the Establishment, B, Name and Address of all persons having a lawful equity or security interest in the establishment, C, A Sworn Statement Must be Provided Stating That Neither the Applicant nor any person having an equity or security interest in the establishment has been convicted of violating Mass. General Law, Chapter 119, Section 63, or Chapter 262, Section 28. D, Proposed Security Precautions, E, The Number of Employees. Number 5, Those Number five, no special permit shall be issued under this section to any person convicted of violating Mass. General Law, Chapter 119, Section 63, or Chapter 262, Section 28. Six, for the purpose of this bylaw, the term substantial or significant portion, see adult use definitions, shall mean 10% or more of gross sales for adult bookstore, adult video store, and adult paraphernalia store, and any form or amount of nudity in adult club. No obscene matter, I'm sorry, number seven, no obscene matter, material, or conduct as described in Mass. General Law, 262, Section 31, shall be permitted. Lastly, number eight, should any provision of this section be declared illegal or unenforceable by the Attorney General or an appeals court, then it shall be deemed stricken from the bylaw, and the remaining portion shall remain in full force and in effect.
Thanks, Tom. Public comment? Marilyn?
Hi, Marilyn, District 3.2, Piper's. Just a quick question or clarification. Now, I have two documents that I got from the planning board, and as I read through, as Tom read the information, he referenced Chapter 262, and I have 272. On all my documents-
All mine say 272 also.
So, okay, I just want to make sure that we're reading it right, so we get it right.
Okay. I had talked to, you knew this, with the interim planning director, Larry Smith, and he had me change that, because that was not correct. The correct chapter is the 262.
262?
262, yeah. Mr. O'Connor, right.
All right. I'll read correctly into the record.
Right, we didn't update that.
All right, thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you. Council comments?
One of the, the business that was trying to get into this town, it seemed to be mostly adult or erotic clothing, and so it suggests by this bylaw, and unless I'm, you know, I'm missing a point, that if a business like this, or a modern-day dating myself with this Fredericks of Hollywood comment, but that type of business decided to come into East Long Meadow, I don't see it necessarily falling in here unless they offered-
Other things.
-sex toys, videos, and so forth. So, if that's what the planning board's intent is, and again, I'm fine, I'm just trying to get an understanding, so if this Adam and Eve business came in and says, "We're just selling clothing," that's it. No toys, no videos, nothing, just clothing. Would that be exempt from this, and I asked this question without knowing the answer, but I'm going to suggest that perhaps they would be. So, throwing that out there.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing regarding a new zoning bylaw relating to adult stores, clubs, and video theaters for a second reading, with said reading scheduled for February 27th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, our last public hearing is regarding license insurance compliance. This is a second reading. The reason for this public hearing is to read into the minutes for a second time a new proposed bylaw regarding license compliance. This bylaw would prohibit or revoke any license to those businesses that are not in compliance with state regulation and town bylaws, as well as owing prior municipal charges. Council members, Thomas O'Connor, Paul Fetterici, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and Mike Kane. Tom, could you read the notice, please?
Yes, sir. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February 13th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the council and agency located at 328 North Main Street to address a proposal for the Liquor License Authority, LLC, and permit granting authorities of the town to deny or revoke any local license or permit who has neglected to pay any municipal charges and is not in compliance with the state building code, sanitary code, and town bylaws, including all health, fire, and police and building codes. Information relating to this bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thanks, Tom. Kathy, do you have the notice?
I do, it's another long one. The council enacted the following bylaw establishing a procedure by which the various town departments shall provide notice to the licensing authorities that a license holder's premises is in violation of any state or local law, bylaw, rule, or regulation as a result thereof, it shall deny, revoke, suspend, or modify any such locally issued license. Section 1, title, revocation of municipal licenses for violations of local or state laws related to the premises. Section 2, authority, the bylaw is enacted pursuant to the authority of Article 89 of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth, the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter, and any other applicable statutes. Section 3, purpose, the purpose is to provide a uniform and cost-effective method for ensuring a locally licensed business by the town it is in and remains in compliance with safety, health, and other laws, bylaws, rules, and regulations applicable to a premise holding licenses issued by the licensing authority allowing the operation of a business in the town. Section 4, definitions, in construing this bylaw, the following words shall mean, A, license or locally issued license, any license permit or written authorization to operate or perform any work or provide any good or service within the town issued by a licensing authority or an employee or agent thereof. B, licensing authority, any board, committee, commission, council, department, or employee of the town that issues any license. Section 5, procedure, A, any municipal department head that has determined that a premises to which a license has been issued is in violation or noncompliance with any law, bylaw, rule, or regulation enforceable by his department shall, after unsuccessfully taking appropriate actions to bring the premise into compliance, notifying the licensing authority of the continuing violations in writing and in detail set forth, the basis for his determination of the existence of the violation. The notice to the licensing authority shall include a request for the renovation, I should say revocation, suspension, or modification of said licensee. Until the licensing authority has held a hearing as hereinafter set forth, it shall not transfer or modify said license until, unless the department head files a written statement with the licensing authority that the premises has been brought into compliance and withdraws the complaint. B, the licensing authority may suspend, modify, or revoke any license, including renewals and transfers, of any license that is subject of department head's complaint, provided that written notice is given to the licensee and the department head that a hearing will be held by the licensing authority. Said notice is mailed to the licensee by certified mail, and the department head shall be notified by hand-delivered letter from the town clerk indicating the date and location of said hearing, at least 14 days before the date of said hearing. The letter shall inform the licensee of the violations to be considered, along with a copy of the department head's complaint, and shall state that he has the right to present evidence as to the existence of the violations and why the license should not be suspended, modified, or revoked. Said department head's detailed statement of the existing violations filed with the original complaint shall be prima facie evidence the violation and shall be sufficient reason, unless rebutted for the revocation, modification, or suspension of the license. Any findings, D, excuse me, any findings made by the licensing authority with respect to a license revocation, modification, or suspension shall be made only for the purpose of such proceeding and shall not be relevant to or introduced into any other proceeding at law, except for an appeal from such revocation, modification, or suspension. E, any license modified, revoked, or suspended under the bylaw shall not be reissued or renewed until the license authority receives a certificate issued by the department head that the party has brought the licensed premises into compliance with the applicable law, by rule, rule, or regulation as of the date of the certificate. A party shall be given an opportunity to enter into a compliance agreement, therefore allowing the license authority to issue certificates, set forth any limitations to the license, and the validity of said license shall be conditioned upon satisfactory compliance with said agreement. Failure to comply with said agreement shall be grounds for suspension, modification, or revocation of said license, provided, however, the party in breach is given a hearing as set forth in Section 5B above. Section 6, invalidation, the invalidation of any section or portion of any section of this bylaw shall not affect the legality or enforceability of the remaining section or portions. The council enacted the following bylaw establishing a procedure by which the tax collector shall provide notice to the licensing authority that a license holder has unpaid municipal charges requiring, as a result thereof, that it deny, revoke, suspend, or modify any locally issued license. Section 1, title, revocation of municipal licenses for unpaid municipal taxes or charges. Section 2, the bylaw is enacted pursuant to the authority of Article 89 of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth, the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter, General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 57, and any other applicable statutes. Section 3, purpose, the purpose is to provide a uniform and cost-effective method for the collection of municipal taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges or obligations of whatever nature for persons or entities holding licenses issued by a licensing authority or permit granting authority that are not paid when due. Section 4, definitions, in construing this bylaw, the following words shall mean, A, license or locally issued license, any license permit or written authorization to operate or perform any work or provide any good or service within the town issued by a licensing authority or an employee or agent thereof, except any license or permit listed in General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 57D. B, licensing authority, any board, committee, commission, council, department, or employee of the town that issues any license. C, taxes, any municipal taxes, fees, and charges of whatever nature owed to the town. Section 5, procedure, A, the tax collector shall annually and may periodically furnish to the licensing authorities a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise that has or is requesting a license from the town, hereinafter referred to as a party that has neglected or refused to pay any taxes, and that such party has not timely filed or does not have a pending application for an abatement or appeal of such tax. B, the licensing authority may deny, suspend, or revoke any license, including renewals and transfers, by any party whose name appears on said list, or with respect to any activity, event, or other matter which is the subject or such license, and which activity, event, or other matter is carried out or exercised, or is to be carried out or exercised, on or about real estate owned by a party whose name appears on said list, provided that written notice is given to the party and the tax collector, that a hearing will be held by the licensing authority, and the notice of said hearing is mailed to the party indicating the date and location, provided that said hearing shall be more than 14 days after the date of said notice. C, said tax collector's list shall be prima facie evidence for denial, revocation, or suspension of a license to a party. The tax collector shall have the right to intervene in any hearing conducted with respect to a license denial, revocation, suspension, or modification. Any finding by the licensing authority with respect to a license denial, revocation, modification, or suspension shall be made only for the purpose of such proceeding, and shall not be relevant to or introduced in any other proceeding at law, except for an appeal from such denial, revocation, or suspension. E, any license denied, revoked, or suspended under this bylaw shall not be issued or renewed until the license authority receives a certificate issued by the tax collector that the party has paid all outstanding obligations to the town, or that an acceptable agreement has been reached providing for the payment of all outstanding taxes as of the date of the certificate. A party shall be given an opportunity to enter into a payment agreement thereby allowing the licensing authority certificate setting forth any limitations to the license, and the validity of said license shall be conditioned upon the satisfactory compliance with said agreement. Failure to comply with said agreement shall be grounds for suspension or revocation of said license, provided, however, the party in breach is given a hearing as set forth in Section 5B above. Section 6, waiver, the licensing authority may waive a denial, revocation, or suspension if at said hearing it finds there is not business interest, direct or indirect, between the party and the person, corporation, or business entity, including its officers or shareholders, if any, or members of such person's immediate family, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, owning the property containing the licensed premises. If a determination is made that there is such a relationship, the licensing authority may order any payments are due or that may become due from the party to the property owner for the lease, rental, use of occupancy of the licensed premise shall be paid to the tax collector until any monies owed to the town are paid in full, provided that the property owned is given notice of the hearing to consider such action in conformity with Section 5B above, and has the opportunity to object to the entry of such order before any findings and order become effective. Section 7, exempt licenses, this bylaw shall not be applicable to the licenses listed in General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 57D. Section 8, invalidation, the invalidation of any section or portion of any section of this bylaw shall not affect the legality or enforceability of the remaining sections or portions. The end. How did Nancy Pelosi do that for eight hours?
And how did everybody-
I'm sorry, that's not part of the hearing.
Do we have any public comments? Ralph?
Good evening, again. Very nice reading, thank you. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. First off, I don't have any problems with what the council's trying to do as far as the licensing and suspending a license if someone owes money. My question comes in, is these two new bylaws, I'm assuming they're both general bylaws, I'm asking where they go in our general bylaw, what section, what paragraph? There's nothing that points that out. With regards to the first of the bylaws that you read, it appears to be a brand-new bylaw, which I have no problems with. The second portion of it appears to be replacing an existing bylaw that we already have, which a lot of it is verbatim, word for word, under our general bylaw Collector of Taxes 4.060. If that's the case, then we need to remove what's in there and replace it with this, and the correct way to do that is, according to the charter, by strikeout. So, that way there, we can actually see what was there, what's been removed, and what's being added. I mean, I could go into the charter and all, but it's pretty straightforward.
Kathy participating and chairing the license subcommittee, I believe, might have some direction for you.
As to your first question, how will it be numbered? It has its own distinct number under something called licenses, but I don't recall it. It's, I want to say it's Section 6, but I don't have that folder with me tonight, but we can, it-
But we can, there is a distinct one set forth, and you're correct. We need to do the strikeout on the, in that paragraph of...
Yeah, because as I was going through...
Because it's redundant. My understanding was the way the attorney, Donahue, constructed this was to merge the two under one, but we do still need to do the strikeout action on the previous that you're referencing.
Okay. And the other thing, on the second one, section 6 waiver, our existing bylaw allows the town manager to, may waive such denial, suspension, and the new one is the licensing authority. I don't know if that was done on purpose, switching from the town manager to the licensing authority?
That I don't have an answer to.
Okay.
I would defer to Attorney Donahue on that.
Under the charter, the original, when the original bylaw was drafted, the licensing authority and the board of selectors were one. When the change was made from life of selectmen, language of the selector was changed to town manager, because the town manager took over the majority, if not ninety-nine percent, of the duties of the board of selectors. However, the charter provides that the licensing authority, the one who's responsible for issuing the licenses, is the council, and the manager has no authority to approve or disapprove licenses for things that are unpaid because he is not the licensing authority. So that was the reason that it's changed the council.
That makes sense. And like I said, I think the strikeout portion and all would...
Make it feel...
Pretty much make it so that it's readable and, oh, that's the reason they gave it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license authority and permit granting authorities of the town to deny or revoke any local license, license or permit who has neglected to pay any municipal charges and is not in compliance with the State Building Code, Sanitary Code, and town bylaws, including all health, fire, and police and building codes. And, I'm sorry, we should close the public hearing first.
I just want to make one quick comment, if I could, on this. Couple changes, and I know Counselor Hill was mentioning it. We really need to clean up the language.
Yeah, I've been catching that as we go.
Revocation, renovation should be revocation, it's mentioned a few times in there. And the other one is just to make it more gender neutral. Section 5A, it says enforceable by his department, I think we should probably say by that department or his or her, just to kind of keep it more gender neutral.
Okay, thank you. So we're closing the public hearing at this point. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe this requires a roll call vote, so.
Aye.
Tom O'Connor?
Aye.
Aye, with the amendments.
Kathy Hill?
Aye.
Mike King?
Aye.
So the next motion would be to return back to the original order of our agenda. I believe we go back to section 8 under licensing matters. So I'd entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the beer shop, March 16, 2018, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. for a home brew competition. And just to add one other piece to that, there was a fee of $65, and that was paid.
Some more?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, under old business, charter amendment for Article 2, Section 6, town bylaws. Tom, do you have any information on that at all?
I'd ask you and Jim.
This article is the issue that was raised by the council a couple of times about the costs required by the charter of publishing verbatim copies of proposed bylaw changes and in attempt to, or desire to seek an amendment of the charter to allow a synopsis rather than the full desired change to be published. We determined that the procedure is represented to you with your last meeting where, once approved by the council and forwarded to the Attorney General for approval, that once it's approved by the Attorney General, it then must be submitted to the populace at the next general election. So to that end, I prepared for the council, and I talked to the clerk today, told him I'd give that to you, an outline of the procedure that has to be followed in order to accomplish this charter change or any other charter changes that you wish to enact, as long as they don't deal with the term of office or the structure of the government specifically, but just minor changes to the charter, the timeline is set forth in there for the council to review and follow.
Right. Thank you. What we'll do is, we'll probably schedule it for an upcoming agenda after everyone's had a chance to review it and then I'll move forward from there.
The only thing to note, that the changes need to be completed and approved by the Attorney General at least sixty days prior to the election in order to put it on the election warrant.
Well, so time's wasting, then. We're right...
So timing is an issue for the next election if there is a connective agenda.
Thanks, Jim. So, under new business authorization, superintendent to submit statement of interest form to the Massachusetts School Business Authority for the accelerated repair program. Gordon, thank you for your patience.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with all of you. Just as you were saying, Mr. Kane, the Mass. School Building Authority requires both a vote from the school committee and the town council in order to allow me to put in a statement of interest through their accelerated repair program. It's the same program that last year we submitted to for the renovation project of doors and windows at Meadowbrook. Actually, we put all three in last year.
And the roof was turned down?
And unfortunately, or fortunately, we'll go with the positive, fortunately, we were accepted into the program for windows and doors. However, they had so many applications at the time that they increased their threshold of the age of roofs and moved it from twenty years to twenty-five. Our roof this year is twenty-five years old?
Happy birthday.
So...
Happy birthday.
Thank you. So, what I'm seeking tonight is motion and a vote, hopefully a vote of approval to submit that statement of interest to the accelerated repair program. The current project that we're engaged with, with the Mass. School Building Authority, the renovation of the windows and doors at Meadowbrook, is providing us a fifty-five percent reimbursement rate.
Kathy, did you have anything?
I have the motion to read.
That would be great.
I was going to apologize for the length of the motion, but listening to the bylaws...
This is, this should be a brief. Just like a preface. Having convened in an open session, excuse me, in an open meeting on Tuesday, February 13, 2018, prior to the closing date, the East Long Meadow Town Council of the Town of East Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form for the accelerated repair program dated on or before February 16, 2018, for the Meadowbrook Elementary School located at Parker Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five: Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the East Long Meadow Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. Thank you. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form for the accelerated repair program as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck with it.
Thank you. Moving us to financial matters, we have a financial update that I believe Sarah and Denise are prepared to give us.
So you have in front of you tonight a bunch of pages that looks kind of like this. Part of it has to do with the, our capital projects that we said we would have for you tonight, and then the balance is answering questions that Counselor O'Connor had raised. Aside from that, we, do you have any other information as you're providing them? Just the free cash? Yeah, the free cash, an update on the free cash. And at our next meeting, I would suggest, and I don't know what we have for the next council meeting, but we need to have the joint meeting with the school committee to get the ball rolling on the budget, which means at that point, the council needs to give us direction on their priorities in accordance with the charter. What your priorities are for this budget. So, Laura's yours.
So, the spreadsheet that has been provided, what the town manager and myself did was we went and met with all of the departments on the capital projects. After, we then put them as a priority level one, two, or three. I have then sorted that list by priority one, two, or three, and then the next sort was just by department name. So if you see an item that was a priority one, just because it might be above another one does not mean we actually rank it as higher than the other one. We just sorted by department there. If you look at the priority ones, we have eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars in capital budget requests that we felt were priority one, that we were not thinking of bonding. And then we have three additional projects that we also listed as priority one that we would designate for bonding. Those three projects total five million, five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for a total capital projects of six million, four hundred thousand, five thirty-eight that we considered priority one compared to all of the projects that were submitted. Does this make sense to everyone so far?
So, if I can just jump in?
Please.
The ones that you're going to bond, specifically the...
Kathy, I think you've got paper on your screen.
Paper, microphones.
That's better.
Sorry, Mr. Mackey. The replacement of doors and windows and then, so for the accelerated repair program, that is our, the share that we have to?
No, that is the total amount of the project, but the MSBA requires that the town has to commit to bonding or funding the full amount of the project.
Gotcha, okay.
And we are expecting approximately fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five percent. That was my...
Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I just wanted to clarify it.
So if you, if you look at above the bonded piece, the total is the eight ninety-five, and if you go to the second page on the backside, I asked Sarah to put what, one and a half percent of the current budget is two percent and two and a half percent. So depending on your priorities, if you feel that we should be funding more than the one and a half percent, the ones that we felt were the most urgent, the most, the best use of our money for this year, and you want us to go to the next level, maybe two percent or two and a half percent, we're prepared to do that very quickly, probably tomorrow morning, we'd be able to get that done. Because we'll take those twos and we will then rank those like one and a half or two, two and a half, so that we can fine tune what they are. Tom, you're familiar with the process because it's the same thing that we used last year.
And I do want to just give one little reminder, is that that eight hundred and ninety-five are just those projects. If we do bond those three projects, then we'd have to do either short-term financing or whatnot for that year, so there will be a small cost to it in fiscal nineteen, but your first bond payment is most likely not until fiscal 2020, in which case that bond payment we would take into consideration for that year's budget.
Okay.
Sarah, if I may?
Absolutely.
Really, I mean, I didn't get this until like 4:30 when I got home. We were going to get a list of all the projects that were submitted?
That is all.
So they're all ranked here?
Yes.
So this is everything that was submitted by the department heads?
Yep, and I have them all in my bag, so if you need detail, I'm more than willing to do that.
You will notice that we did not rank the water and sewer enterprise fund projects at this time.
Because that comes from...
Right, that is our next step to do, but I know that the, we felt that the town council wanted to know the general fund projects first, so that's why we placed those as first priority to finish prioritizing and put them in order for all of you.
I have just a general comment, and please don't misconstrue what I'm going to say as a criticism around any person.
Oh, boy.
No, I'm picking my words carefully. I'm trying to say this with knowledge of school buildings as well as a taxpayer, needing to make sure that our capital assets are well maintained. There is an entry here for the middle school that's ranked a number three for replacement of carpeting. I don't challenge why it's there or why it's ranked. My point is, in September, that building will be going into its nineteenth year in existence. It's an extremely well-built, well-maintained building. But it's bothersome to me that that could be the only thing that might need upgrading. And I just want to reiterate, if we back up, when I did work in the school district many years ago, when I was on the other side submitting capital requests, we ran into a couple of years in town where there was, from the town meeting floor, frustration by the residents saying, "We are not paying as close attention to our buildings in this town in terms of maintenance as we should, and therefore now we have this litany of huge bills that we are hard-pressed to try to get on top of all at once." So I'm simply putting that out there. I find it hard to believe that heading into twenty years, that that's the only thing that might need updating in that building. And again, it's not a criticism, it's just, let's just not, that's, of the five buildings, that's the newest. Let's just not assume that it's still a new building. It still looks like one, and to the credit of even the kids, the users, as well as the custodial personnel, let's please not just assume that nothing needs to be done. I would agree, though, I, seven years ago, I put the carpet replacement on there for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is the potential for mold down the road. So I'm glad to see it there, but it just makes me get a little nervous that that's the only thing, so just be prudent about making sure that we are on top as much as we can, because new buildings are hard to come by, as we know. That's my four cents.
Well, the school board actually prioritized theirs, and that's where we went.
I do understand that, but in the global thing, piece, we have to be very attentive to making sure.
Don't take for granted that the newest building... Don't take for granted that the newest building doesn't need anything.
Absolutely, and the DPW superintendent did meet with the school as well to go over what needs to be done, as well as then participate in...
Just as an FYI, or as an example, the roof has a 25-year warranty. You're six years from the warranty expiring, and we already had to engage early on in the 25 years to get some repairs that the warranter did not want to provide, but after a little bit of an arm wrestle, they were provided. So there's already some piece over the gym area and the cafeteria end of the building that, I wouldn't want to say compromised, because I'm not a roof expert, but 26 years is a big time before you're looking at a roof on a very large building. That's all. It's really not a lecture to you at all, Sarah. It's just, I want to just throw that out there, that we need to pay, make sure that we're paying real, real good attention to our buildings.
I have a question regarding, in this case, it looks like Maple Shade. Last year, we allocated $35,000 for the interior and exterior door replacements to purchase of. Was that purchased, was that done?
Yes, and last year, it was, they had submitted it as one project, and when we went through it, we broke it into multiple phases.
Three phases.
And so last year was phase one, and then this year, they requested to do phase two and three together, and so that is what you see here, is what phase two and three would be.
And phase two and three totaled to what?
It's the $62,000, I believe, yeah.
Okay, that's close to the 95 that was initially requested.
Correct.
Let me just make myself, and I'm sure Sarah is the same, if you have any questions on a particular project, we're both available to sit with you and go through the whole list if you want. Like I said, I have them all here. I'm not going to carry them back again, because if you're not asking for that level of detail, but you think of something, you certainly are welcome to come, and we'll sit with you and just go over whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the next item was that Mr. O'Connor had asked capital projects about the potential bonding information, and so he had requested via email to have information for bonding in the amount of $5 million, $10 million, and $15 million, and to do it in terms of 10, 15, and 20 years, and that he wanted to know what the yearly cost and the total cost of bonding for each of those amounts would be. So I have included a copy of that email in your packets, as well as then the debt service schedules that would be associated with each. So for instance, if you looked at the three items that we are considering for bonding, it's 5.5 million, so it's close to your 5 million, the building, so most likely it would be similar to, if you looked at the third page, there's the 20-year debt service, which would equate to about $385,000 for your first year's payment of principal and debt and continuing on. Now that we have the more specific projects, we have more specific information from all of you, I can go back to our bond financial advisors to get a more honed-in estimate of what amortization schedules would look like for each of the individual projects that we want to bond, and that kind of information, but the original request was to do it at this broad level, so that's what I have provided here, okay?
It looks like the bond rates have gone up substantially from what we looked at last year.
Yeah, from last year to this year, yeah.
Yep. Another piece of information that Mr. O'Connor requested was some information about an increase in employees. So I believe the specific question was the number of people increase and the related salary increase related to budget, and we had discussed to do a point in time of December 31 of '16 versus December 31 of '17. So I wanted to let you know that I did do that information, that there are eight positions. Four of them are town council members, because before it was a board of three selectmen, now it's a board of seven town council members. Two of the positions were positions that had been budgeted in fiscal '17, but had not actually had a person hired yet as of that December 31, '16 date. So that's why that they would show up, and one of them was the human resources director, which had been approved under both the old form of government and the new charter. And then the other one was an accounts payable specialist for the accounting department that had been approved to go from a part-time position to a full-time position. Then there are really only two brand-new positions that had been created, and they are the fire department's administrative secretary, as one of the few departments that did not have administrative help, and then the other one was one health inspector. The total salary increase from that fiscal year, from December of '16 to December of '18, would be $171,926. The $23,000 of that is the town council, those four members. These are the only new positions that are funded by the operating budget. There are some other new positions, but they are grant-funded, revolving fund-funded, et cetera, so they do not impact the budget at all, not directly related to your tax dollars. One other piece of information that I just wanted to remind everybody is that the boards are not new positions, but that there was a change in the rates that were paid to board members.
Paying board, board of...
So I did want to just remind everybody of that, and that increase in budget is $46,641, and of that, $35,000 is town council stipends.
What was the standard that was set for all the boards?
I don't have it in front of me, but it... Ah, I don't, no, I think it was like 500 for members and 750 maybe, or 700 for the, I can look it up.
Okay. So they're all getting paid the same?
They're all getting paid the same.
Except...
Yeah, I was going to say, school board is higher?
The school committee is $250 higher for the chair position and for the individual member position, and the town council members are at a different rate compared to the other boards, but yes, all the other boards are the same.
Right, because the school board is elected versus the rest were given the same stipend because they're all appointed.
I'm just looking at the appointed boards and wanted to make sure they're all...
They are all the same.
They're all the same rate. In fact, some, we were talking about it today, some went up and some went down.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Yep.
And then the last bit of information that I wanted to bring forward, and I know a lot of the town council members received this via email, but I know our citizens did not necessarily know this, but our free cash was certified. And so our free cash for the general fund was certified at $4,570,217. Please note that of that, 2.5 million is the free cash that we did not spend in prior year, which therefore carried over into this year.
So guess what Sarah's going to ask about that?
I know what's coming next.
So, the next week, I will be asking for OPEB.
On the free cash certification, given from memory from reading the email, did it say, based on an unaudited report, are we concerned that if they audited, that that number might change?
No, no, our audit has been completed. Our formal report hasn't been issued yet, but the audit has already been completed. The DOR has reviewed it, so no, there is no concern.
It's pretty solid.
Yep. And then we also, so that is for general fund, and because each enterprise fund is its own separate fund, it gets free cash certified as well for each of those. So we did receive for water, $1,056,852 in free cash, and for sewer, we received $757,751. And so again, free cash, it's not free, and it's not really cash, but essentially, it's your undesignated money that you have available, should you collect everything that you have outstanding. Does that make sense to everybody? So some of this can be used for special projects, for initiatives, for things like OPEB, or in water and sewer, they could use some of that in order to subsidize some rates if they needed to, although both those amounts are relatively small, so that's probably not what they would do this year, but that is technically a possibility. Does that make sense to everybody?
Any questions?
Would you forward that information on the staffing email to us?
The free cash?
No, the staffing.
The staffing, sure.
Just a clarification on terminology here, and it comes under IT when it says teacher devices or student device replacement. We're talking computers, right, when you say device?
Yeah, the submission was some of it to replace MacBook Pros with MacBook Airs and Chromebooks and...
I don't challenge, I just wondered what if device meant?
Yes, that is exactly what that means. Any other questions at this point? Do you have any other questions having to do with the budget that then we'll be coming forward with at the next one that you'd like to make sure that I include when I'm presenting you with additional information? Any additional requests?
Because you're supposed to get financial information, so what you want is what...
Okay. Then thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
So under financial matters, number two is regarding town council authorization for the town manager and finance director to sell our school buses. So I would propose a motion to authorize the town manager and finance director to sell our school buses.
Can I ask one question? Do we have any kind of bids in yet? Do we know what those numbers might be and what range?
I did not know that.
We have received quotes from two companies, but we are going out to get a third. One of them was low, one of them was a little bit more than what it would take to pay off the bond relating to them, and so that's why we're going out for a third quote, as well as the company that we are interested in outsourcing transportation to has not given us their estimate either.
So the consortium has not given us a number yet? These are outside bidders?
Yep. Any other questions over there?
Thanks.
Just a side note on your previous thing, reminding you of the bus, is there like a master list of each department's physical assets that we could have or something of that nature, or is that just common knowledge?
It's not common knowledge as to the assets. Those lists have been started at the different departments. I cannot tell you how accurate they are as of today. That is one of the items that the town manager and myself have discussed about streamlining it and getting it updated to stay on top of, you know, as things change, but we aren't quite there yet.
So it's not like something we've had over the years, it's something you're working on?
Yeah, the one that we do have from over the years wasn't maintained very well from some of my predecessors, and so it's a lot of catch-up.
About this time next year, maybe we'll have a list, perhaps?
We do have a community block grant related to our fixed assets, and so that we are using by the end of next fiscal year, so we should have much more information to give you at that point. But whether this time next year I can say, yep, we have every asset tagged and logged, I doubt that that will be done at this point.
As a business owner, we're always asked by the town to provide what assets we have. What are the assets accounted for? Selling buses, selling things?
Right.
It'd be nice to have, you know, in a budget planning, to know what the assets of each department are.
We do have a listing of all of our assets that we have insurance over, such as all of our vehicles, our special property, like our special kinds of cameras, say for sewer that go into there.
Our buildings.
We have all of those, our buildings. It's just more of how many chairs do you have? How many desks do you have? That kind of smaller items.
How many computers we have for teachers, how many computers we have.
Well, that one actually, IT does have that. IT does have that, but every department, knowing how many tables that they have or whatnot, it gets a little bit harder, especially if departments received items that were donated or maybe not well-documented as to the original cost as to, well, how do you label that?
You guys are running.
Thanks, Sarah. Grab a second. I have a question. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Our last subject under financial matters is the re-acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20. I would propose a motion that the town accept the provisions of General Law, C. 32B, Section 20, to create an other post-employment benefits fund for the current and future liabilities of the town for the group health insurance benefits for retirees in their departments, which fund may be expended to 2/3 vote of the town council and designate a trustee or trustees and further to direct that such trustee or trustees adopt and file a declaration of trust and take all other actions as required by said section, or take any other action related thereto.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So our last motion would be to change the order of our agenda, seeing that our public hearings have already been complied with, to move into executive in return to open for adjournment purposes only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Bill Walcott?
Aye.
Yeah, I think you have to say her names.
Tom O'Connor, aye.
Paul Lederwee, aye.
Tom Anderson, aye.
Kathy Hill, aye.
Mike King, aye. Thank you.